I'd like to call the meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education Order. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he'd lead us in our invocation, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise. Let us pray. Kind, grace, heavenly Father, again, we thank you for this day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for all the accomplishments that these children have made as we come to the close of another end of the school year, an academic year which we've seen growth, seen success. We thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon these children. We thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon our teachers, our staff, and the abilities you give them to teach to the best of their needs and to meet the needs of the children of this county. And we pray, Lord, that you be with those who are sick. We pray, Lord, that you be with our member Scott Smith, his family, and the death of his grandfather. Lord, we pray your guidance and directions upon this board as we try to make the best decisions possible that affects the lives of each of the children, of each of our staff at this school system, and that we can have the best and greatest school system in this state. And, Lord, it is all these things that we can ask with your many blessings and under your guidance, we can achieve many things. Now be with us as we go throughout the rest of this evening and be with us as we go through this summer months, and let us all come back to a safe school system, a great school system, and guide and direct us in all that we do. We give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Again, Scott Smith will not be able to be here this evening. He had a death in his family, as Mr. Rogers mentioned in his invocation this evening. Please remember Scott and his family and the loss of his grandfather. Board members, our next regular board meeting will be held here at the Education Center at 7:00 on July the 10th. Again, the graduation dates, we've already had a few, and very nice graduation ceremonies so far. And Pisgah High School is June the 9th at the Ramsey Center at 7:00 p.m. Tuscaloosa is on Saturday, June the 10th at the Ramsey Center at Western Carolina University at 11:00 a.m. That's Saturday. Central Haywood High School on Monday, June the 12th at the Haywood Community College Auditorium at 6:30 p.m. Please make every effort to be in attendance, if you can, to celebrate our graduates this year. We also have the retiree recognition and end of year reception on June the 9th at Tuscaloosa High School Auditorium at 2:00. Under agenda adjustments, I understand that we have Building and Grounds has one item they'd like to add, and we'll add it between 13 and 14. We'll have one motion from Building and Grounds. And then, I know that the board is very excited about something that we're going to do, so we're going to change the agenda just a bit, and I'm going to recognize our chairman of our finance committee. We're going to adjust our agenda just a little bit, and we're going to let Mr. Henson bring forward at least one motion from the finance committee.
At this time, I bring in a form of a motion to approve, from the recommendation of the Recruitment and Retention Committee, to approve the local supplement for certified positions. Presently, we are 0 to 19 years of experience gets 4.5 percent. 20 to 24 gets 4.75, and 25-plus gets 5 percent. We're recommending that we go from 0 to 4 years, we'll get 4.5 percent. 5 to 9 years service, we'll get 5 percent. 10 to 14 years, we'll get 5.5. 5 to 19 years, we'll get 6 percent. 20 to 24 years, we'll get 6.5 percent, and 25-plus, we'll get 7 percent supplement. That's an approximate cost of $423,000.
That's in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
We have a motion from the Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Larry Henson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Everybody wants a second to that one.
Well, I don't know how you can do that, but I'd say that Jimmy Rogers, I think you've been voted to get to second that motion. So are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Been a long coming.
Yes.
Teachers, you deserve it.
Much deserved. There being no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll continue on with the Finance Committee later on, but now we have some really great news from Mr. Mark Shepherd.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Board. We do have a nice variety of athletic accolades to give out tonight, and I just want to start with saying, Winslow Middle has some track superlatives, but they're not able to be here tonight. So we're going to have Scott Early come around and start with Bethel Middle School.
I'm here on behalf of the Bethel Middle School track. We done, we had about 50 kids out this year, which is 10 times more than usually comes out evidently. We had a good showing. We had some athletes stand out at the conference tournament, starting with Levi Cagle.
Here, Levi?
He actually was the conference champion. He jumped 35.8 on a triple jump. A conference champion, which was...
How many inches further than the top guy?
Eight. So he blew it away pretty good. He's also a part of the team of the 4x1 meter track relay team. They were actually the state, actually had the state record in middle school all over as a middle school team for 47.98 seconds as a middle school group. So that was awesome also. And that team consisted of Levi...
Justin Farman.
David Queen, he's not here. He couldn't be here with us tonight. His four. Proud of that team. Had done a wonderful job. They actually finished probably from here to the screen ahead of the first team behind them, so they blew it away. So I'm proud of them. And Spencer Reeves and the other track coaches that weren't present right now, we're really proud of.
Congratulations.
Okay, so now we're going to jump around to Pisgah High School, have David Franklin come around and announce Pisgah High School's archery team.
Try to make this short and sweet, but...
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte. Chairman, Board, thanks for having us again tonight. Just want to touch on a little bit of these guys' accomplishments this year. I'll go ahead and call them on up here. Houston Connor. Merritt Kirkendall. Logan Clark. Kenneth Farmer. And Dalton King. Again, I kind of typed this up here so I could go through it pretty quick, but you're looking at your 2017 North Carolina State High School Archery Champions, and it wasn't even close. I mean, I heard Scott talking about their guys, but we beat Murphy at state championship by 15 points, I believe it was. So that was an excellent job with them. Merritt is also your 2017 individual state champion. So, good job. And just to touch a little bit on Pisgah's archery altogether, this is the second state championship for Pisgah in four years. They also won it in 2014, and I believe Dalton, Logan, and Kenneth, we're all on that one. They tied for it in 2015 and then won it again this year. We didn't make it to state last year because of some other issues that we had with, at our district tournament, and didn't make it to state, but if we would've had, we'd have probably had another one. But this year, we won every tournament that we entered. The archery team did. I think six tournaments total that we shot in. They won all those. Our county tournament, we won it with a score of 993. Merritt finished first with a perfect score of 200. Our Midwest Tournament that we put on in Crusoe, the team won it with a score of 990, and this is out of a perfect score of 1,000. Dalton finished second in it with a perfect score of 200. I think that's the only tournament that we didn't have somebody win individual. A kid from Murphy won it. Our Far West Tournament, we shot a 993. Dalton finished first, Merritt second, Logan third. Then we went to Murphy, and I think Dalton won it with a perfect score of 200, and Merritt and Logan were second with a 199. Our District Tournament, we shot a 996. We were four points short of shooting a perfect score as a team. Merritt beat Dalton out. Both of them had perfect scores of 200, with both of them with six X's. 12 X's. Both of them had...
Right.
Both of them had 12 X's, but Merritt had the most at 25 yards, I believe is what it was. So that's how the tie was broken. Kenneth had more X's than both of them, but he dropped his last shot, shoot a 199. And then at state, we moved back the distance at state. They tried to make it a little harder this year, so they moved back five yards at each distance, and Merritt won it with a perfect score of 200. Logan finished seventh, Kenneth 10th, Dalton 19th, and Houston 20th. And as a team, again, they won it by 15 points, I believe it was. So, great job, guys. I couldn't do it without Chad, Mike Fraser, Darrell Donaldson. Everybody sitting over in the corners at every practice and at every tournament. So, thanks, guys. I'm going to miss a few of these guys. They've been with me for a long time. So, congratulations, guys, and good luck.
A lot of time and dedication from the coaches who make all that happen, and the team's going to just full-on Hunger Games, unless you... So now, we're going to have the, tonight's Assistant Athletic Director from Canton Middle School, Josh Simmons, to come around and announce several teams for them.
Well, thank Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, and the board for having us. First of all, I'd like to thank, just, we have a lot of parents that are here from Canton Middle School. Mr. Barbie's here. Want to thank Mr. Barbie and our administration. They do a great job supporting us in our athletic programs. And what a blessing it is for these children to be able to present, to be able to participate in some of these sports that I know I didn't get the opportunity to participate in in my middle school experience. We didn't have a middle school track. We didn't have middle school golf. We didn't have things like archery. And it's a great place we live in that allows us to be able to do that. So the first conference champion I have tonight is Warner Mull. If he would come on down. Warner is your Blue Ridge Conference Champion in the shot put with a throw of 39 feet and 10 inches, and he had an undefeated regular season. Good job, Warner. The next team we have is the Canton Middle School golf team, and I'm going to call them up and then speak about their accomplishments. Alex Boone. Tanner Devlin. Evan Loftus. Eric Loftus. Joseph Bradish. Tucker Ballier. These young men had an undefeated regular season. They went to the conference tournament. The first round was held at Hendersonville Country Club, and that day, they probably didn't play their best, and they fell behind, I think, by about six strokes. The way they do middle school golf, they play nine holes on one day and then nine holes the next day at a different course. They came back to their home course of Lake June Luska and shot a 168 as a team, which ended up making, was a 10-shot strokes better than anybody that day, and they ended up winning the conference by five strokes. So, very good job, guys. A lot to be accomplished. Good job. I want to introduce Coach Marty Nelson. He is going to introduce his conference champion baseball team.
I do appreciate you guys having us here tonight. And as Coach Simmons was saying, I was thinking, you know, we didn't have a baseball team when I was in middle school, so it's awesome that, not only do we have a baseball team now, that you guys will take the time and recognize these boys, because it's important to them. It's something they're always going to remember. I'm going to do the same. I'm going to call them up one at a time, and then I'm going to talk about the accomplishments we had. First, we have Trent Devlin here tonight. Andrew Wester. Freddie Goolsbee. Matthew Hamill. And Thomas Blackley. And we have more. They're just, we're not able to show up tonight. You know, this is probably, I've coached baseball for a long time. This is probably the best group of boys I've ever coached. We really talked in the first practice about being a family, and that's what they came together as, was a family. We faced adversity at times. We actually finished the season 15-2. We lost to Smoky Mountain. One game, we split with them, and we split with Brevard. Then, when it came to the conference tournament, we end up getting to play both those teams and beat both of them. The championship game was actually played in Smoky Mountain, and I'll have to say, playing-wise, coaching-wise, it was not only the longest game, it was over three hours, but it was, it was a fight, and they just kept fighting and fighting and fighting. And we ended up winning in the bottom of the seventh, 11 to 10, becoming the tournament champions. So I'm proud of these boys, and I'm just looking forward to what they're going to do the next four years when they get to Pisgah High School. And again, I could not do it without Coach Andy Goolsbee and Coach Mark Blackley and Coach Wes Rathbahn. They were not able to come tonight. But I'm proud of you, boys and coaches. I appreciate all the help. It was a lot of time and a lot of effort, so thank you. The other players that are not able to show up tonight were Devon Dodgen, Jake Scott, Makin Hyder, Levi Medford, Caleb Bradford, Justin Jones, Nathan Gray, Owen Lawrence, and Abram Burnett was our manager. And I have a feeling that you're going to hear those names again the next couple of years. So thank you for having us.
Congratulations to our athletes, and I know that you've worked hard this season, and if you would like to exit the meeting, I'm sure you'd like to stay for the whole meeting, but if you'd like to go home, now's your chance to leave. Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the board? Nobody's addressed. Board members, you've got an opportunity to look at the minutes from the May 8th closing regular sessions and the May 30th closed session minutes. This time, we entertain a motion that'd be approved as presented. Dr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second? Say it, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Alisa Glantz.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, I'd like to present the local planning system management thing that we do for our career and technical education each year. Y'all's approval tonight. There is a, supplied the link for y'all to go to, to look at the document. It's about 100 pages long. I'm not, I'm not even trying to go over each page with you. I would like for y'all's support again for this year, the 2017-18 school year.
Okay. This time, we entertain a motion. We approve the CTE plan for 2017-2018 as presented. Does that move? Mr. Francis has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say it, Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glantz. Next, we have some policies that we need to talk about from Mr. Shepherd.
Oh, Ms. Francis, I'll be back in about an hour up there. Members of the board, so the first thing we have up for tonight are the policy footnote updates. This is a group of 52 policies that are being updated in technical changes only, which means only, something in the footnotes, a very slight change. If you look at that example that I sent to you, they're not even highlighted. In fact, they're ready to go put into our manual. Look on the last page of that policy, the second paragraph where it says "legal references." At the very end of that section where it says "State Board of Education Policies," you'll notice SSCH-dash-triple-zero, comma, SCFC-dash-005. That's part of the new nomenclature that the State Board of Education has adopted to name and number their policies, and those are the only changes that were made into these 52 policies. And any, any, any policy changes that would have required even a word of change in the regular policies are addressed in the next group that we're going to look at.
Okay. This time, we entertain a motion. We approve the, just the footnote policy updates that are being presented. 52 policies, my understanding. Does that move, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second? Mr. Clark made a second. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Just for the record, those policies are being put in place as a, as a product of Policy 2440, which allows the superintendent to enact those policies based on y'all's ratification at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Also, if you'll notice in the example policy, at the very end of it, where it gives the revision dates, the last revision of that policy was January 11th of 16. This notes it as May 24th, the day Dr. Garrett and I talked about this, '17. It also denotes that only the legal references were changed, nothing in the body...
Okay.
...of the policy, just to make that clear. Okay? Okay, so for the next thing, that, that next group that you have there in front of you is for first read.
The policies are too numerous for me to enumerate, so I'm just going to say the policies listed will be tabled until the next board meeting for public input. Most of those policy changes are just wording that has been changed due to general statute changes.
Right.
Okay. And this came out of the policies from NCSBA?
Yes, the spring updates.
Okay.
The only one that I wanted to bring out that we really ourselves took a change into that will affect us is Policy 3410, and just wanted to highlight the fact that we are changing the percentage of EOC test scores as a, as a part of your final grade from 20 to 25 percent in that policy.
Okay. Any other questions about any of those policies? Again, they'll be tabled until our next regular board meeting, which will be July the 10th. All right. Thank you so very much, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Where we're going to roll back around to our Finance Committee, Mr. Henson has a few more items that we...
Several.
Several we would like to get done.
First off, on the agenda is number 11, which is a motion, I make this in form of a motion, to approve the 2017-18 interim budget resolution. And what this does is, our state budget doesn't come out till...
Whenever.
Whenever.
We've got to operate.
So we have to operate. So this gives us a budget to operate with until the state budget comes out.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Henson in the Finance Committee. Do I hear a second to the motion?
A second.
Say it, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next up is a motion to approve June 30th amendments and revision resolution, revisions and resolutions. That gives Dr. Garrett the authority to do everything to close out the year, so we don't have a special meeting, have to have another meeting.
Okay. And then, of course, it comes back to us in July.
To approve it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion from Mr. Henson in the Finance Committee. Do I hear a second to the motion? Say it, Dr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Okay, next up, Finance Committee did meet, and we went over the regular monthly financial reports. Everything looked good, and this is a motion to approve those.
We have a motion to approve the regular monthly financial reports from Mr. Henson in the Finance Committee. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Say it, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I have several more.
All right. Keep on the rolling.
Next up is the motion to approve the Folt memorandum of understanding, and we did kind of add a little bit to that, so if anybody didn't get to see it...
It is on there now.
It is on there now, if you want to read over it, but, and that is a motion to approve that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Folt moot from Mr. Henson in the Finance Committee. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Say it, Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Say, Mr. Clark, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? The attorney has looked at it, and we're good to go. Just thought I'd throw that in there. Okay?
Um, this is basically where they ran our buses and
Correct.
Stuff, if anybody, right now.
Ran our buses for
Any other questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next up, motion to approve Hazelwood Elementary's half-eighth, eleventh-month assistant principal to full-time, eleventh-month assistant principal. Projected cost of thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars.
Okay. We have a motion
Projected.
Projected. We have a motion from the finance committee and Mr. Hinson. Do I hear a second to the motion? Say, Mr. Bobby Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next up is a motion to approve a two-and-a-half-day, twenty-hour-a-week, eleven-month assistant principal for June Luska Elementary School, projected cost of thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars.
Okay.
Depending on who she hires and how it works out.
Right. Projected cost.
Projected.
Well, we're approving the position.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion from the finance committee of Mr. Hinson, and do I hear a second?
I want a second to that one.
All right, Mr. Francis is gonna second that one. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next up, motion to approve increasing the lead teachers at Riverbend Elementary and Meadowbrook Elementary from half-time to full-time, ten-month positions. Projected cost of sixty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars.
We have a motion from the finance committee and Mr. Hinson. Do I hear a second? Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, one more. Motion to authorize the superintendent to pay central office administrators in the administrative five category at least as much, four, excuse me, at least as much as he or she would earn as a classroom teacher per month, beginning with the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. This being ongoing. This is a temporary fix. We hope to do a long-term fix later, but
Correct.
A projected cost of ten thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Hinson in the finance committee. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Say, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Now, you said sixteen, seventeen, so they're getting back, but
Yes, we'll be
That's what you're saying.
Retroactive.
We'll be retroactive.
Any other questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have from the finance committee. Like the good Lord.
Been a busy, busy time. What you've seen tonight, though, is a culmination of a whole lot of work by a lot of different folks on this board, and I appreciate the fact that this board has looked hard at all of our finances. They've looked at every possible scenario to save money. And, yeah, and again, you've seen the commitment for this board, for our administration, our teachers, and our staff. And I, I just wanna thank all of you, each and every one of you, for the hard work and dedication, uh, looking out for our folks. That's what we've done tonight. Any other comments about that?
We'll say one thing. We had a lot on here, but a lot of it was worked out in our work sessions, too. That mean, that means a whole lot.
I know.
Of those, so.
It's a very valuable source of information, and, uh, again, they're open to the public for folks at one time, so. All right. Did I leave anybody else out that I had, you got building grounds?
No.
Got building grounds.
Got new building grounds. All right, let's do it. I was ready to move on to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the buildings and grounds only has one time, one motion this time. We didn't take as long as Mr. Hinson did, but anyway. Uh, this comes as a form of a motion of buildings and grounds that we would like to proceed with the design and bidding to repair the steam leak in the gym at Bethel Middle School. And while in the pro- process, upgrade the boilers that are out of date and install air conditioning.
Okay.
Comes as a form of a motion for the buildings and grounds.
We have a motion from Mr. Rogers in the building and grounds committee. Uh, do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Say, with Dr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
We have a projected cost on this, by chance?
Yeah, I looked it in the other room.
Wasn't it two hundred?
Two hundred, two hundred thousand, yes.
He's got, he's got the money in his
Twenty thousand dollar design, and it's coming out of capital outlay.
Coming out of his budget.
And out of his budget, out of maintenance budget.
Okay. Any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, and building grounds. Oh! Glad you said that. You was thinking about something. The next item on our agenda is, uh, this board appoints, uh, several members to the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees. Uh, we advertised for this position, and, uh, we got a real good applicant. Uh, many of you know Ms. Lynn Milner. Uh, she has applied, and she has asked that, uh, we consider her for this, uh, position. Uh, she says that, uh, she's willing to serve. I talked to her via phone, uh, earlier and asked her if she was, uh, uh, committed to being at the meetings and to, to serve on the, in this capacity. And, uh, she said she would, and, uh, she assures this board that she will be a good liaison between Haywood County Schools and the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees, and will work with us and work with that board to see that we, uh, mutually work together in, in solving some of our issues that we have. Not that we have any bad issues. We got opportunities, is what we have. Anyway, um, at this time, I'd like to, um, entertain a motion that we
Mr. Chairman, uh, that what you've been said there, and, uh, Ms. Milner's willingness to serve, I would like to make a motion that we approve her as a Board of Trustees for Haywood Community College.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Hinson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just wanna say she was a very good school board member, and I think she'll be an excellent, uh, asset to the community college board.
And she did pass on this one announcement that she wanted me to make. She said that she was very sorry she couldn't be here personally tonight, but tell Steven that she misses him terribly.
I'm glad you told me that before we started to vote.
Me and Steven had a good time sitting over here cutting up a lot of times. I had a hard time keeping them under, under control there, but they do, they did a good job, and we, we look forward to that. On a serious note, though, I think she will do an excellent job. And, uh, at this time, if, if there's no other discussion, uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Garrett, would you please inform Dr. Parker and Ms. Milner of the decision of this board tonight through official letter, please? Thank you. Now, we have our personnel. Dr. Anne Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have twenty-three separation from employments. You have fourteen employee status changes, and you have one leave of absence. For your approval, you have fourteen employments, hundred and three employment status changes. How many pages?
Lot.
You have three leave of absences, fifty-four employee coaches, seven non-employee coaches, three volunteer coach services, and then you have two-hundred-and-forty-nine contract renewals, and I'm gonna pull, pull number one-hundred-and-eighteen out of those.
Okay.
Number one-hundred-and-eighteen.
Number one-hundred-and-eighteen, okay. At this time, we entertain a motion. We approve the personnel as presented to this point. Dr. Rogers has a motion. No, I hear a second.
Second.
Say, Ms. Barrett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for contract renewals, number one-hundred-and-eighteen.
Okay, the chairman has been Was it you?
Well
Go ahead and say your point, yeah.
Okay, uh, the chairman has been informed by Dr. Rogers that he's not gonna vote on this due to it being a personal family member. So, um, he's been asked to recuse himself. We, we'll do that. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve, number one-eighteen. Is that correct?
One-eighteen.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Rogers has made the motion.
I'll second it.
Say, Mr. Francis, any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, what is it? One, two, three, four, five, six, two, two, one abstention. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anything else?
Okay, for the board. Is she gonna introduce the
Okay. All right, y'all wanna
Wendy, do you wanna
Introduce your new folks?
Wendy, do you wanna come up and tell us who your AP is and
Mr. Chairman, I don't think any of them are really new.
Yeah.
Well, not really new, but they're, they're, uh
Well, congratulations to each and every one of you.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Meeting adjourned.